Okay, on your side.
Good evening, everybody. It's six oh two P M. This is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me for a second by the allegiance.
And by my seat is your spirit alive, not even have to date her, but in different part of Christian stands on a page and forgot any individual liberty being charged for all.
Thank you very much. Members present include myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Levinheim via Zoom, Supervisor Michael Albert, Administrative Coordinator Jessica Hodge, Conservation Recreation Director Dr. Alex Jackson, Township Manager Julia Holica, Engineer John Tressler, and Solicitor Ron Karasak. Announcements this evening will conclude at seven fifteen due to time constraints.
Yeah, that's me, by the way. My son has an open house at J T L that started two minutes ago. Um, I'm gonna rush out of here right at seven.
We had a standing executive session this evening from five oh two P M. To five thirty eight P M. Regarding litigation in the Mountain Manor Back Nine case, Water Gap Wellness case and personnel matters. There's a special Board of Supervisors meeting for the Rivers Edge Bike Park Master Site Plan Wednesday, September seventeenth at six o'clock P M. Here. And two other things, we have a fall pickup for Poconos Friday, October tenth. And Fawn Road, I want Alex go over that during the E A C report. And the trunk or treat and Fall Fest is Saturday, October twenty fifth, here at the municipal center, one to four that day. Rain date is the next day. You can sign up on our website. Okay, first order of business, the consent agenda, which is the consideration request the planning commissions review of the data center ordinance. Approve the draft twenty twenty four financial statements, ratify soil testing at Marshall's Falls Park, and approve the September ninth twenty twenty five bill pack totaling ninety seven thousand eight hundred three dollars and ninety two cents amongst the general fund, professional escrow fund and capital improvements fund. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Albert. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Levinheim, discussion.
Um, just, I think you probably told me this before, but Monroe County Control Center. The uh.
That's what we pay for nine one ones.
That's the ten thousand?
Yes. Yeah, they split it into two payments, right?
That's.
I think we paid them.
Quarterly, something like that.
Okay, it's phenomenal.
Yeah, they they give us all of the bills at the beginning of the year and they ask them to pay them on schedule when they're due.
And us paying middle Smithfield Township, that is, is that road building or?
Uh, if you look at the side of that, it says green light go reimbursements, so.
Oh, yeah, G L G.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
That's related to installing all of the lights.
Okay. That was done by Derek, they installed it?
Um, to make a a complicated situation simple, um, Smithfield Township took the lead on that. And then we took, because the grant is eighty percent reimbursable, and we were taking the lead on doing all of the engineering. In order to make sure that we were all proportionately fairly reimbursed, we had to do a percentage of all of the reimbursements. With the exception of any any of the engineering services.
Okay.
So those changes are what you see.
Those are the two adjustments?
Yes, um, plus then uh them getting additional funding from the second tranche of money that came in from Penda.
Okay. Okay, makes sense.
Anything else?
Um. Now that's the only questions I have.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Okay, next reports, emergency services, Marshall's Creek, I think indicated they were gonna be coming to our uh second meeting in September. Have you anything you wanted to say perhaps? Cool.
I don't know about this.
No worries. Okay, those are the report will go to run.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh. I have worked on Commonwealth Court appeal matters, uh, the brief that was due for the township and the Christine Carroll appeal. Uh, was due last week and that was worked on through the end of the month until last week. I also received yesterday's mail and order from Commonwealth Court on Mount Manor directing that my brief be filed within fourteen days. And the other brief said be filed within the same time period. And also I prepared based upon last month's meeting, uh, five official action letters along with four salvo waiver and stormwater waiver uh forms, and that was for the Delaware Water Gap denial, and then the approvals in uh Moitika and uh, help me out here.
Uh, the Smithfield Sewer Authority.
Smithfield Sewer Authority, Rocko's Collision, and the Shukitis Matters. So they required official action letters. They also required salvo waiver forms to be completed. They've been sent to the various engineers who are planning for those boards for all signature. And you know, that's what I have done. And I and I would like to just do one aside here, so that in all due respect to Mr. Klotowski and and Miss Byrne, that it has not been this board that has created the issues. Uh, you know, the issues with Mount Manor, the issues occurred by the zoning hearing board deciding the matter. An appeal then being taken to common pleas court where the judge, not you, supported that matter. And then based upon that support, you had no choice but to then file for an injunction in order to be consistent with the judge's ruling. Now the matter is in common pleas court. Uh, Attorney Maserick asked, uh, when we were, when I was preparing for the permanent hearing in the on August twenty first or twenty second. He asked why the matter should just not be stayed while the appeal is pending. Uh. And of course, with the matter being stayed, that means the injunction is also stayed. That was his decision. I said, okay, that's fine. If that's what you want to do, as long as the injunction is in place, we can stay it until the appeal is heard. And now the matter is with the Commonwealth Court, which unfortunately takes some time. Based upon the appeals again that were filed by Matt and Banner. Now, you know, if I was sitting in Mr. Klotowski's case or Ms. Burns's seat, I would say, what's going on here? It's just taking for forever. Unfortunately, that's it's the way the system is, and we have a judge's order that says that the use isn't permitted. So uh I don't know what else I can do other than to tell them I want to hear from them. I want them to come to meetings and talk and say what they have to say. But other than that, as a legal matter, I'm not sure if this board really is on is is in the loop there, if you know what I mean. I mean, other than the injunction, but you had no choice. Once the zoning board decided against against Mount Manor. So I don't know. That's what I have to say. And obviously, I'm sure there's disagreement with that, but I wanted to just make that clear. So no one thinks that anyone's trying to pull a fast one on it.
Well, I mean, I I feel the from what I was told by our attorney, Chris Brown, you asked for uh, another, you asked for more time to submit. They then it's been a month since they you've gotten that and they never responded. And it seems it seems like you're dragging it out.
The order, the order came, the order came down today or to yesterday permitting me to file the additional brief. I could send that to you if you'd like, but it came down yesterday or the day before, giving me fourteen days to file that brief. So I only can tell you what what I have in front of me that I got from the court.
Uh, it seems like you're dragging it out. You know exactly. You know, we're right. You know, we're gonna win.
The judge says, no, you're not right. So how can I say you're right? A judge said, no, you're not.
You know, we're right. Robert's not sitting in that chair because he knows what his part is and he's scared hiding. How can Robert keep? How can Robert keep working from from Spain, working from home? Who knows where the hell he's at? What is he doing? He hasn't been here for almost three months now. What the fuck?
Come on, alright, now can I get into that? Engineers report.
Thank you, Jacob. Um, we've got all our reviews behind us, uh, prior to the last meeting. So what we've been working on since the last meeting, we've done a little bit more work on the master plan for the bike park. Uh, and then we reviewed the cost estimates for the Shawnee Valley P R D, which is going to be uh in considered under old business. And I also had some discussions with the sole bidder for repairs to the post office bridge, uh, which we can also discuss under old business.
Alright, thank you. Um, I'll jump to you, Terrick. You wanna talk about I eighty six eleven, Walt, Julia?
Uh, good evening, Karen Mazanati, regarding uh the I eighty and six eleven matters and you know, we have a water gap as a whole. Um, just a few, I'll go down the three topics, the Explorer Act, um, eighty situation and and six eleven. Uh, regarding the Explorer Act, our gateway communities, um, uh, action, I've heard nothing. Um, so I just wanted to make just mention it all the time and just let you know that uh there's no update there. However, there has been a suggestion that um, this action could in some or in our support of it, all the municipalities could in some way be related to the movement to designate the Delaware Water Gap area as a national park. So I wanna just put that forth, make sure you're aware that that suggestion is out there and and let you know and state publicly that I haven't done my due diligence on this. Did I mention this at the last?
No, no, I I just saw one of the Facebook posts that insinuated that trying to get more infrastructure money may meant that we supported something that we don't. So.
So so I, when you started nodding, I thought, oh, did I say this to you guys? Um, so I just wanted to put it out there. I had done my due diligence. I had looked into uh where this had come from. The Gateway Communities Provision really started from out west. It was glacier um and in impacts that they were having because of its visitor overuse. We are impacted by visitor overuse. We're looking at ways to mitigate it. If anything, for example, Hardwood Township on the Jersey side, they are very against the national park designation. They don't want that. So their view on it is it gives them a seat at the table to speak their view on it, like every municipality, every municipality should have a seat at that table to be able to represent what's in each municipality's interest. But no, this is not a global effort uh to move in that direction. So I just wanted to put that forth. Um, regarding eighty, uh, no, no, you know, no good news there. Um, the N J, uh, the N J T P A, which is our M P O, um, like your northeastern Pennsylvania, uh, um, authority, they did fund the Rockwell project and the retaining wall project. So now that's that's moving along. Um. I wish I had better news on that. Uh, we are working on that on the Jersey side. I don't need to come here and ask anybody to do any more than you've already done. You're on record with your position and we're moving forward with that. Same with the long range transportation plan. It's kind of bizarre that you got Congressman Kane, our state legislators, our body of support requesting a study of all the issues, exit four to the Delaware Water Gap, and include the retaining wall and the rock wall situation in it. Kind of bizarre that, you know, two deaths in two thousand twenty three, I think it was, twice the state average of crashes on all of Route eighty. Only place in the state, you have two lanes, only place in the entire state, two lanes, and um and they did not acquiesce. They did not put a a study in the plan. So we're working on this on on our behalf on the Jersey side. So sorry to mention that's not forgotten. Uh, regarding six eleven, I I said, you were on the email chain, good news is, you know, the little things are good news. Penda is still looking at what they may be able to do regarding inspiring people to be more patient at that light.
Yes.
So doing, it's in the category of we're doing what we can.
A countdown just makes sense.
It did. That was brilliant, you know?
Just do a countdown.
A countdown, you would hope that.
And the jets take off.
You know, you would think.
I looked from that photo that was sent. I don't know if you sent it or if someone else in the thread sent it, but it exists elsewhere, obviously.
Yeah, so so they're working on it. Hopefully we'll hear soon, um, what they've been able to determine as um an enhancement to the situation that's gonna be here for a while. On that note, moving into the project of six eleven, they're retaining well their rock wall mitigation project. Uh, that timeline that I was talking about hasn't started. You know, I would, we did everything collectively we could to be on record, to do everything to say fast. And to provide as much data that we could to help inspire that to go as fast as you can. So as a municipality, you did it. Um, and we got caught. Some of it's, I I think, transitioned because some of the of the rules of environmental review are changing. So I don't know that everybody in federal highways really has sorted out what to apply, where, when, and how for this these projects. Um, they may be taking advantage of some of the delay because they know maybe some of the changes that might come down might speed things up in the long run. Uh, but we don't know. Um, but that timeline that I was talking about, which is real, which is, I think, four years minimum before they're moving in there is is in place. So that's the bad news. On that note, uh, there's a whole, uh, for the National Environmental Policy Act, the N E P A review, there's a category of stakeholder called a cooperating agency, like these weird words, the things. So as a cooperating agency, um, having been watching all this, um, I do believe, and I've spoken to the other municipalities that we partner with, I do believe that we have jurisdiction to ask to be a cooperating agency in my husband's expertise in the field. Um, I do think uh we have that. So I'm I'm working that on the Jersey sign on how to um, really formulate the request to uh Penda that gets somehow representation as a cooperating agency. I'm struggling because is it each municipality making that request? We don't exist as a something.
Right, not a collective agency.
Um, so just know that um that we're working on something because then you get records and you get to advocate earliest in the process. It's different than anything we've done before regarding Route eighty. So, um, and I think that's about it. Any questions?
For me?
No, we can.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, happy to keep you updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Hi, Julia, I'll come back to you. And just report.
Sure. Uh, quick overview for August, we received sixteen written no requests. I'm issued some permits. Uh, I've been working diligently on uh putting out the green light go, and we've been hearing us to submit a lot of our say grants. Nice one.
Excellent.
By the what for um, security at the parks and?
Working on at least one for security. Uh, I'm meeting with the company who's doing the cameras on September fifteenth. Uh, it was supposed to be tomorrow, but they requested a couple extra days to start together. Um, from there, we're also doing various uh requests on behalf of the fire companies and branches.
Alright, okay.
Awesome. Hi, Environmental Advisory Council. Alex, I understand you have a couple.
Yes, this is chairman. The Environmental Advisor Council is being paid regularly. They are working on two programs. The first is a hike at God's Ridge, um, wires out in lobby. It's at one P M. On Saturday, September twenty seventh. It's a interpretive educational hike. It's about spot are really difficult. This is their first, um, one of these, and we'll, you know, pilot for that program. The other program is the full pickup of Poconos, as you mentioned, Friday, October tenth. Um, starts at eleven A M. If if folks are interested, so far we haven't had anybody sign up. I know there's a lot of folks here in the audience. If anyone would like to help clean up Fawn Road on the tenth. By all means, um, scan to sign up. We need some folks, we need some volunteers, and um, you know, there's the opportunity um, potentially for carpooling. So once you sign up, we'll reach out with more details. The other thing E A C sent was a recommendation to the township manager for potential multi municipal collaboration that's being reviewed at the moment. And um, I did speak to Chair Pat Owens. He sounds remarkably well, almost in a miraculous way. I was so grateful to hear her voice and had a nice conversation with her. I know Supervisor Levinheim had also had a conversation with her not too long ago. So she's um off, she's agreed to put together a status report so that there'll be more detailed information because right now it's still very, um, you know, there's details.
Because I think we might have to take the three interested people, or at least the two that we have letters for at the moment, and make those appointments and alternate appointments at the next meeting so we can let them move forward because they've shown interest.
Oh, that'll be on the agenda then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then talk about giving the, making the alternates have the voting rights too. Okay, for that. So you already, I think they already sent us a draft of that that you wrote, so we'll talk about that next meeting too. Anything else?
I'm not from the environmental.
Awesome. Okay, uh, supervisor comments, Michael, Robert, anything?
Nothing for me.
I don't, I don't think I have it.
Okay. Alright. So now we're gonna have a presentation from Paul Reset from the Pennsylvania Environmental uh Council um about green stormwater infrastructure. Uh, he'll give himself a good introduction to what he has done for us. So I was just gonna make sure that he can uh, share uh his screen and and do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I had just a short presentation. I know I had about five minutes. My name's Paul Reset. I'm with Pennsylvania Environmental Council, Senior Program Manager for Watersheds. And I have been um working on reviewing or development ordinances to see how well they enable what we call green stormwater infrastructure. And I got a presentation here. I'll just, you know, take a little bit of time and and some questions. Can you see that presentation?
Yep, we can see it now.
Yeah, yeah. So there we are. Um, I, we are a nonprofit group. Uh, we've been around for fifty plus years, Pennsylvania Environmental Council. I'm out of the Philadelphia office. We do have a Dallas office, but we work on, I'm working on water. We got energy and climb bed trails and Greenway folks working all around the state. And what I just wanted to do is give a quick overview on this project, looking at ordinances. Uh, if a developer wants to redevelop or develop and it, can they do go green in terms of green stormwater infrastructure? I'll briefly explain that. And then we looked at the the Smithfield Township ordinances to see how well they enable green stormwater infrastructure. Um, I have some, I could report some briefly on some findings, and there is a report that I provided. And then, you know, some next steps. So basically, a green stormwater infrastructure is what you're you're trying to manage stormwater where it falls, using more natural systems. And they could be anything from things in more um rural suburban areas like rain gardens or bio swales or naturalized basins. When you get into more developed areas, uh, could be planter boxes, tree trenches bump out. So it's a whole suite of sort of green practices that manage stormwater following stormwater management regulations. And we really focused on looking at the codes and ordinances. So you have your stormwater management ordinance, but you also have zoning and subdivision and various plans that really dictate when somebody comes in and wants to do a project, and I do a rain guard, and I do a bio swell. A lot of times it's driven by what's in, you know, multiple codes. So what we did was look at the multiple Smithfield Township codes. I did want to say that the regulations at D E P, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection is sort of trending toward either uh enabling or requiring G S I. So their their current ordinance they have, they basically have optional language that says, you know, you could, you could require G S I, but it's not required. Two thousand eight model ordinance is kind of trending toward, you know, you really should use G S I. Smithfield Township, we'd looked at your um, your regulations. You guys are already there. You pretty much define G S I and low impact development. You have definitions. And then in your stormwater management regulation for volume control specifically, you're basically saying you should use G S I, green stormwater infrastructure, you know, wherever possible. So you guys are you're doing pretty well with overall. It's like that's a, uh, there's not, there's not a barrier there. You're saying use this. So what we did was we looked at, um, we have an uh, uh, what we call an assessment process where there was twelve questions, and we looked at your your ordinances, and we focused on things like parking lots and streetscapes and buffer areas, cul-de-sacs, and is this, is there language in there enable someone to kind of very easily, what can I do this? How do I do it? And that's kind of the assessment that we did for for Smithfield. And I did provide a report, uh, against Dr. Jackson. It basically answered the twelve questions. It has an appendix with example code and ordinance language. I focused on residents to some degree. There is like a homeowner or small project stormwater management toolkit that I put together. And just in a nutshell, I was just gonna. And just in a nutshell, I was just gonna cover, you know, maybe a couple of topics, um, looking at. Where you might have more denser development along your, your economic industrial or maybe your medium residential zones. Uh, the suggestion there was that things like maybe tree trenches or sidewalk buyer retention, you could have more language. In your saddle and zoning that would just sort of speak to uh, what these are defined, um, you know. Have them defined in your, your, your uh, your ordinances. Um, and likewise for parking lots, you have some language in there that talked about. Landscaping and types of vegetation. And there could be a little more specificity about. A parking lot island could be landscaper for stormwater. It could be a certain size and certain volume, certain native plants. So we gave some recommendations for that. Uh, we did look at residential. There's, you have sort of education and outreach and there's a lot of. Uh, you have a lot of material. So I basically provided more and suggested the E A C could maybe be involved. If, if a resident was interested in a rain garden, that they could, hey, here's how you could do this and here's a toolkit. I was just gonna say that some townships do, uh, you guys have a five thousand foot impervious cutoff. So a lot of residential does not need to do any stormwater management, but some in our neck of the woods down here near Philadelphia, some of the townships. Have what they call non-engineering uh, planning that's required. You gotta, if you do certain thing under five thousand, there's still some requirements. But it's uh, lower cost, non-engineering rain gardens and things like that. And then there was a couple of other focus areas, the buffers, uh, maybe you could add stormwater features, which, in what is otherwise an aesthetic buffer. Called it, if there are cul-de-sacs, I guess there's some, including a landscape islands. And then just, you know, there's always gonna be turf crafts where you have active recreation and gathering areas. But if there could be sort of promoting the broader use of native plants, you do have some of that in your ordinance, but we, there could be maybe a little bit more so. We put together a guidebook, which I've also shared, um, which kind of goes through these questions. And it also has sort of the next steps, which I think most you guys, you, you, the township folks would be familiar with. If you wanna. Update your ordinance, there's a process and this just sort of lays out the steps. Um, you know, talking with staff and elected officials and boards and solicitors. So it's just sort of a pathway. There was. My recommendation would be take a look at the report. Um, if there's any interest, you can kind of, kind of get back to me and. I know I just had five minutes, so I just wanted to take that amount of time and. See if you have any initial questions and just encourage, encourage you to look at, you know, the findings of our report.
I appreciate you going through it. It's nice to know that we're, you know, pretty much where we need to be. But I'm excited to see like the non-engineering stormwater stuff. That sounds interesting. Stuff that we can promote, like local nonprofits will promote rain gardens and rain barrels and stuff like that. But whatever we can do on our end to kind of achieve that measure would be cool.
It seems like a lot of these references, uh, sorry, this is uh, Supervisor Michael out there. A lot of these recommendations are sort of adding some somewhat, some like. Incentives a little bit for basically keeping things a little bit greener in, in developments and. Allowing some of stormwater to happen medians and that sort of stuff. Uh, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, there was, there was a question on incentives and so we did kind of summarize incentives that have been offered. If you, you know, if you go, uh. Yeah, uh, it's, if you can build that into your code, all the better.
But even that, that was question twelve, but even the other one seemed to be, I mean, the suggestions seem to be, well, allow, you know. Allow greener space in medians and in parking areas. Doesn't seem like there's a lot in here that's super restrictive. It's sort of more providing options.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. It's more, people, people want, if a developer comes in, is having it more explicit in your code. Um, it's not the usual, you know, we're just gonna put it into, you know, into the storm drain and like we, we, we can manage it. On, on these green features and there's some direction on, if you're gonna do a landscape island in a parking lot, is there. You know, a certain minimum size that would enable the plants to better survive. Ideas like that, other native plants would, would better fit into that space. You could have a list of them. So it's sort of enabling people to, you know, better be able to. Uh, use, go, go the G S I route and have it sort of built into the regulations. So they don't have to do any kind of variance or, you know. Work around. It's sort of explicit in the regulations, more explicit.
Right, the last thing I would want is someone have to get a variant in order to. Right, so, I mean, in terms of next steps, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you're asking for that yet, but it, it'd be nice to see.
Something they would generate that.
Well, I guess if you guys would do that as a part of your, your. Um, plans and your funding, um, to the uh, ordinance, certainly the focusing on those areas that. You know, keep people from doing the greener options that might be in our, um, in our ordinances now. I mean, I'm looking through these recommendations. I see a couple that I would love to see put into place right away. I for one would be happy to see an ordinance like that go through.
And you guys are in pretty good shape. Like I said, you, you do actually require for volume, for stormwater volume. Sort of like you really should use G S I unless there's some. Reason that, you know, the developer has to say, I can't because maybe I don't have enough space and I'm sure that might happen. But uh, you know, so you're in a good shape. It's just more kind of be, is it gonna be easier? Is it more defined on, on the steps for doing G S I? That's where, that's what I was trying to give you in the, in the, there's an appendix that kind of shows examples of what other or municipalities have done and guidance. So it's trying to provide as much background for what could be used in an ordinance for you.
Paul, I have heard this term before. What is a bump out?
That'd be more like, it more, it's more in an urban area where we have a street that would be a green street and you might have, uh. From the curb, an area basically where it was a parking space that now is uh, bumped out from the curb. And has green features in it and the stormwater is running into that first filtering through vegetation and then it goes into the storm drain. And it can also serve as like traffic calming. If you have a busy street and you want to slow people down, you're kind of. Put a bump out or two in, you're managing stormwater, you're slowing traffic. I know you're, you guys are more uh, rural, but there are some areas, there are some zones that are more, you know. Commercial that maybe, that they might fit in. So it's more for like a borough or a more developed area. Same thing as a tree trench. You might have a tree trench on a street that you're growing a tree, but underneath it, it's got uh. A, a bed of gravel and it's soaking up water and growing a tree. And then eventually it then will go into the storm drain. But you're, you're slowing it down and infiltrating it instead of just direct discharge, you know, so.
Awesome. Well, Alex, can we ask you over with Paul for the next steps? However, that is best between. The E A C and Paul's organization?
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate your time and, and hearing, hearing me out and thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Okay.
Your whole business need the consideration to award the bid for post office bridge repairs. So I'm gonna entertain a motion and we'll have a discussion on that. Cause John has heard a couple new things since the last time.
Well, motion to approve.
Motion I missed there, I missed it, Levenheim, okay.
What'd you find out, John?
I did speak to the uh, the one low bidder. And I asked him what was driving the cost of the uh, shot. Predominantly, I felt that the other categories were, were in line with what we expected. I did put what to expect on the shock creek, so that's why I wanted to have the discussion. Uh, he informed me that they actually subbed that to uh, a firm by the name of Mara Allen. Uh, Mara Allen was actually one of the firms I had sent the funders through directly, asking them to bid. I didn't realize that they wanted to go as a sub to, to buy state. So I was pleased that Mara Allen is doing it. They do have a lot of experience doing the shock creek. Uh, I asked them whether the spec was overkill. Whether it was what we needed. And they did not believe it was overkill. They, they thought it was the right spec. Uh, they assured me that there was no fat in it, that they've done this type of work before on other bridges and that. That, that was their number, uh, based on the amount of work that we needed done. We also have to, there's money in there to protect the stream from the shock creek falling into it. They've got to basically build a platform under the arches. That protect the stream. So I'm, as a result of my conversations, knowing a little bit more about their experience, who they were using. I'm fairly confident that that's as good a numbers we're going to get for this type of work and that to rebid it would not. Would not probably produce a better bid and it would only prolong the uh, the situation.
Did we have a timeline on this bid? How long it would, when would it get done?
I think it was sixty days. I don't remember that, but we, we tried to keep them on a short leash because we want to get it done.
So are you looking for a motion to approve?
We are, it was already made. We're discussing, discussing now. What, what's the weight limit that can be held after this?
We were, we were not advised to that. I, I do believe, my personal belief is that. The couple of trucks that the resident is concerned about, it should be sufficient to carry those.
I, I know like a Verizon truck went over the other day. Was it a Verizon or?
Yeah.
A Blue Ridge truck without.
Yeah, they moved.
Will they, would those be okay too?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would drive a truck across there today. Uh, I think Penn Dot is big.
Penn Dot is.
They're, they're being conservative, uh, which they have to be.
Right.
And once, once the, I mean, we know that those arch bridges get their strength from the arch. Once we repair the loose stones and put, the shock creek is to reinforce the arches. Which the strength is coming from the stones. It'll be sufficient to carry those brains.
Once it's done, will those orange, all those orange barricades be gone? I mean, they've been there for.
Yeah, they'll be gone. I mean, there will be a, a weight limit posted and that's what we have to get out of Penn Dot. But it, it should be.
Sufficient for emergency response.
For merchant, emergency response and that every garbage truck and the occasional oil trucks, et cetera.
John, what do you, what do you think the weight limit will be? Your estimate.
If I had a guess, I'm gonna say ten ton.
And I, I don't know, I don't think a fire truck can get over there at ten tons.
They're gonna post it at ten tons, but remember, even though a fire truck weighs more. I forget what the spans of these arches are, but we do have a center pier. But I don't think the entire. I think only one axle of a fire truck is on, over a pier at one, at one point in time. So.
Right.
It, it's a complicated calculation as to how that finally gets. Arrived, but.
There's currently no other actual solution.
So there really isn't.
I know that from what Bonnie looked, I mean, we obviously have this in capital funds. Although we wanted to reserve for something else, but this kind of is the rainy day.
There's no, there's no hindsight.
I'll have a public on in a moment.
Grants after the fact, probably not.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Okay, so in other words, we're gonna pay for this out of the general fund.
Capital fund.
Capital improvement fund? Okay, so why are you not going to go? One step further to make sure that the money we're gonna put out is gonna handle the weight. Instead of guessing or whatever.
Nobody said that we were gonna be guessing. I mean, before we issued the notice to proceed, like we don't automatically send over the money and then hope for the best.
Well, you, you kind of just said, you're questioning, you know, oh, they're not gonna have, you know, that many vehicles over there, whatever. But you should find out like in cases of fire, with the fire truck ways, in case there an oil truck, with the oil.
The challenge is when we went to look at this, the decision was to go with the repair of what the bridge is. Cause if we want to do something that might allow significantly more, um, the costs are gonna be ten times this.
Can you confirm that?
Part of the consideration.
Know for a fact, since my family bought a bridge that was. What that was harsh.
No, you only, but, but you guys only said you only got one bid.
Correct.
So how did you confirm what you're telling me?
We had a conversation that we happened with John, that's how.
We talked with the contractor who does this work. This is their only job, job. They're a bridge contractor. Uh, I got a level of comfort in talking with him that A, this was the correct type of repair for this bridge. And B, they have a lot of experience doing this type of repair. As far as the loading on the bridge, I talked to Penn Dot about it. They wanna see the repair before they commit any further. And the loading process is different. Depending upon the amount of traffic that you have on the bridge, the speed on the bridge. There are a whole lot of factors that go into it. The fact that. The speed going across this bridge is gonna be very low. Because it just has to be because of the geometry and it's really no place to go on the other side. It's not like it's a, a through bridge. That contributes to the bridge being able to handle a heavier load. Uh. And the fact that you don't have repeated heavy loads also contributes to the fact that it can handle a heavier load. A heavy load once in a while, uh, is far less detrimental than a somewhat lighter load. Going across that bridge thirty times a day, which might happen on a local road that is open for the public.
Yeah, that's not a local road. It doesn't.
But that is correct. That's precisely correct, which is why I don't believe there's gonna be a problem in getting. A sufficient weight limit on that bridge to handle the occasional truck that's going across it.
What about water pressure? When the water's high and the creek runs, the pounding of the pressure of the creek.
That has, that has not contributed, uh, to the type of. A deterioration that we're seeing. We're, we're just seeing a deterioration from the age of the bridge predominantly. The mortar drying out and cracking. So the bridge has been able to withstand all the flooding we've had to date. There is no scour underneath the bridge. If you have problems with hydraulic. Of bridges, usually you see scouring under the abutments or the pier. We're not experiencing that with this bridge.
So someone did the inspection?
Yes.
I've done that.
And, and that's been doing an inspection every six months.
I was gonna say it's been twice a year, so it was making.
Okay, so we can get it off if we want?
Sure.
Okay, and do we know how much it's gonna cost us?
Two hundred and forty-six thousand and four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So.
Someone would be better to give the bridge to the property owner?
We already tried to go there.
They're not gonna take a bridge that's not posted for, you know, use. The whole, we have been communicating with, with them uh, for a number of years now. Um, in order to get that process in motion and during which Penn Dot made their routine inspections. And then at the most recent one, they said, no more. So.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what other, other option there is. It's a, it's a crappy situation. But it, I select, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, Penn Dot will not allow reopen the bridge unless we repair it. And this was the.
It's a private bridge.
It's not a private bridge.
If it is a private bridge, they're not liable to fix all that issue with the bridge, correct?
I, I mean, that's not a hundred percent true either. I mean, somebody if.
They would be required if they wanted to get oil over there. Otherwise, they would have massive liability issues for having a bridge. It's known to not be able to hold weight, so they would never be able to get oil there. So this is why there's like, no way, I'm not gonna take it.
Anything else?
Well, there are options where you could grab, get a grant, like how you find grants for other.
We looked, that's what I was just asking. There's no emergency that grants that you, that we were able to find for this particular use. Bridge.
It's not significant enough to draw that type of attention. It's not I ninety-five or, you know, like. Can't, six eleven.
There's no way, like you can't give the road to the state. They're not taking roads.
They, they, they asked us, they asked us, they asked us if we've ended out of the region. We told them no.
Right. We've been asked by Penn Dot to take bridges that are the state, which said no for this exact reason. Cause they're very expensive to repair.
A lot of tax people have to get the burden on this bridge now.
It was in the capital fund that's saved, but.
The bridge belongs to the township. It's township responsibility.
Yep.
The township road on the other side, township responsibility.
Alright, common question.
Does the township cloud ever?
Yes.
I know.
Huh?
Now, right?
Not now, no.
Does she still live back there? Does she get hurt? No.
I mean, I wanted to say what she said publicly, but it, it's not her permanent dump site. So it's not been a, it's not been a practical problem thus far.
There's multiple properties there, including commercial property, but not being used.
Correct.
The township has property there too, right? Uh, has open space?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, next is, uh, this is consideration, but it's really discussion on the Shawnee Valley P R D stage one B. Okay, next is, uh, this is consideration, but it's really discussion on the Shawnee Valley PRD stage one B. We've had a number of back and forth, uh. Indications about the development agreement, security agreement, so. We're going to answer some questions, we're not going to vote on any of that this evening, but we wanted to. Address in open form, the open questions, so. Ron or John, I don't know where you wanna start, or Ted, in fact, you wanna start?
But.
Thanks, John, so it's not, cause John gave us some information that. We, um. The developer submitted his. Instruction improvement escrow estimates or. Site improvements or what he has termed phase one and phase two. In stage one B. The stage one B is, uh, an area of the PRD that was approved back in. Two thousand and five. Uh. There's been some back and forth over the last couple of years as to what was actually going to be constructed. And the developer has determined that he's gonna construct what was approved in the year two thousand and five. As I said, he submitted cost estimates for. What would be considered public improvements, which would be stormwater management, road construction. Uh, sewer. Uh, anything that would affect the safe. Uh, the safety and health and welfare of the public. We've reviewed those cost estimates. Uh, we made some adjustments to them. Based on our historical knowledge of what those costs would be. Uh, and we have sent that on to both the developer and the township. They total. Close to six million dollars in improvement costs. In doing this, uh, we obviously looked at the plans to compare phase one. Uh, phases one and two to stage one B. And we made a determination that. Uh, while constructing phases one and phase two, there is only one way in. To phase one and phase two and one way out to a public road. Uh, which would be Shawnee Valley Road. Uh. I don't know which phases which, I don't have on my mind, but one is seventy-six, I believe is the correct count, townhomes. And the other is thirty-seven single-family residences, so there would be. Uh. Over a hundred units. That would be accessing. Uh, are going into stage one B with only one access, so I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Uh, to see concerns might be with that, if any. And that's what we are.
Okay. So. I'll jump in, um. That there's, there's some challenges with this. Mainly, the two thousand and five plan is approved and the judge has agreed. Can be implemented, um. Was, was not necessarily proved in the phases as you're presenting them, I understand you have to do that for financing. Purposes and being able to move it forward. Um, but the challenge is, I, I don't see anything that says that there is an approval that might result. In a plan where there's a hundred units that only have one access, which is not allowed in our township. Um. If that's all you wanna build, fine, but the road improvements. And public improvements assorted, associated with the entire state one B would need to be there in place, which means. Improving hollow roads, adding the bridge across, which is not in what we've seen. So I don't know. How this is in keeping with the two thousand and five plan, the reality is if you go bankrupt. Or if you decide after phase one and two, I don't wanna go any further, then. We're sort of in a tough situation, because then all of a sudden you have a crazy, um, bottleneck. That is specifically not allowed in the township, I mean. John highlighted, highlighted these things out, normally it's, I think it'd be twenty-four hundred feet cul- cul-de-sac. Our township says maximum six hundred, most townships, the absolute maximum is two thousand, so. There's nowhere where that would sort of be allowed, now if you. Would kept going and finish the rest of two thousand of phase, or sorry, stage one B, there's no problem, you, you can do that. But that's not in the cost estimates that was submitted, it's just this phase one and phase two, so I don't, oh. Well, we discussed with Seth, looking, um, executive, and I just don't know where you go from there.
Hi, Michael.
Hi.
Uh, Ted Hunter, representing Shawnee Sun Mountain LLC, the owners, uh. I'm the development representative, a manager, owner of the property. Um. We anticipate building all two hundred and sixty-one units of the project in seven phases. A project this size can't be built all at once. You have to start somewhere, you have to move through, you have to end somewhere. Uh, we have HOP printed, it's already been in progress for Shawnee Valley Drive, I've already priced. The bridge, uh, and the infrastructure, uh, to cross the dam, it's part of phase. Three, before we add the next tranche of townhouses, there's thirty-four units. Uh, if the township wants a condition associated with that. You know, beyond that certain point that that bridge and infrastructure needed to be in place. We think that makes sense, and I've got it forecasted in year three of the overall development, given that there's one year building. The infrastructure, bear in mind. When we build the infrastructure and build the lots, it takes then further time to sell the homes, build the homes.
I got it, I, I got it, I got.
Reach the point where anybody's driving on rubber.
Right.
Other than construction.
I guess my.
So, so challenges are gonna ask us to look at the phase in differently, if it's a major change, and I'd have to look at it.
I think where it have, but what it have to be, again, not about the building of that houses, but it's about the public infrastructure. So. The public infrastructure for all of stage one B. In, in, in my understanding, we need to be reviewed by, by the township engineer. And we need to be bonded, whether or not you're paying for it, but it has to be. The ability of the township, if you go belly under, for us to finish all of the public improvements associated with. All of stage one B, not just phase one and phase two that have been broken up, so that you can do your financing.
You're asking for an additional ten million dollars.
I, I put the amount. I, I don't, so financially, you brought the point yourself, Mike, so we would have to look at if there's a way to do that. Okay?
Yeah, I'm not, no.
Can you do a bond, I don't know, I actually don't know how the bonding process works, you, what you actually put.
There's a limit to financial securities and the timeframes and the commerce.
Right, yes.
We, we currently have our financial securities for phase one and two from Golden Sachs. I sent a letter in. Couple of days ago.
Premiums on them, like insurance, right? You paid premiums on them.
It takes having the assets.
Yeah.
Right.
Can't just ask for it, I, I can't show on my credit card.
So like, for, for sure, I don't.
Try to do that, it's.
It's a high, high limit, you know, you have to have the limits.
So like theoretically, the first couple of phases would be collateral theoretically for subsequent development. Is that what we're?
The land is not being mortgaged, that's the only way, it'd be collateral, so no, it's assets. It's, it's. Golden Sachs working up the assets of the, of the ten pounds, you know.
Okay.
So.
I mean, this was a share with. I mean, this is.
It's from John.
It's a temporary period. That you're talking about.
I can't predict two thousand and eight happening again here, none of us can, we all assume and hope that it won't. The question is, what does it lead if? You've got those hundred homes, uh, in that, and I'll have to have you answer that.
Yeah, but it, it was a conservative by our engineer, that that's not allowed in our township, you couldn't have a hundred units of two thousand four hundred foot. Cul-de-sac with only one exit, that, which is why the full plan had two exits, right?
And it does still, right?
And does still, correct.
There's five more phases that have to be built.
Correct.
Point where we agree. I personally, I think that I questioned where the numbers were created in your meetings. And what justified those, because we look at the true generation of the traffic and the load. I don't know that.
This seems like.
Justify it, but that's not.
Yeah, from, I mean, whether that's right or not, because, yeah, six hundred, so John's assessment, it's, it seems like it's. More than most.
It's more, it's more than what's in the.
It's certainly more than what's in our.
And I suggest you allow us time to work together to figure out if there's a solution.
Because, yeah, I mean, you have, you have an approved plan, so it's just we need to.
It's a amazing plan, though.
Yeah.
And in the approvals, it says we can deliver it and build it in phase, in state, phases within stage one B.
But the pub, and again, I, I, from my standpoint.
Didn't define what those phases were.
Yeah, but the public improvements are required. Well, the, the reality is, even if you just thought the phase one and two, the public improve, all the public improvements associated with stage one B are still required.
It's a phased plan, according to the approval, there's a language in there that said.
But they didn't, but what was approved and what was approved by the judge doesn't specify which public improvements come in which phase. So we're left not knowing that and.
And again, you can't build it all at once, you have to start one somewhere and end somewhere. So we'll.
So I think the question is, what, how do you break up your public improvement so it's? In line, and I think the argument that was made by our engineer was. Yeah, there's other improvements around hollow road, they can wait, they're not related to the in, uh, addition, but these two exits is, is. Directly in, so if you can take a look and figure out.
A follow-up, John.
Yes.
And that's always expecting to get the feedback and our dialogue.
One second, John, I think that's the key. Having that dialogues.
If we set a time that I can have that dialogue, work through, have discussion. Again, it's a financial engineering, not our physical engineering.
Correct, yeah.
The reality to deliver housing.
Understand.
I leave it to the both of you to determine when to leave. Anything else, Ron or John, we didn't talk about before, I let, uh.
Yeah, Ron, you had a, a list of things, did you send those to Ted?
Yeah, I did send them to Ted, and I don't want to. Further, you know, delay it, but there were just issues that I believe the developer should be part of the development agreement. Uh, there may be a, maybe you may want initial higher deposit at ten thousand to get the, you know, project started. Uh, the dollar amounts of the improvements need to be included, that would be the cost estimates that were prepared by John. Uh, and. Again, as to the stormwater agreement, the developer needs to be in the mix, the only concern I had, you know, when John makes these comments, and it's not meant to be a. Left-handed comment to him is that we wanna, I wanna make sure we're not changing the two thousand and five plan. Because if the two thousand and five plan is being changed substantially, gotta be re-reviewed, it's gotta be, we gotta go through process again. Just can't say, okay, here's the plan, but we're gonna make these changes and we should be okay, that's not how it works.
Sure.
If I feel, as long as we're okay, and that is guaranteed, that he's not making any changes to the plan, I'm okay.
I'll make that shirt again, um, Ron, and, and. Two brothers. I responded to that email, an email back. About three weeks ago, point by point, with each of the items there, which we don't need to drag through here. But if there's something that needs to be in that development agreement, we'll address it.
And because of the.
I think, Ron, you looked at that in.
Sent to Ted, my email on August eighth. Saying these are my comments, now I have to see whether or not. I had got something from him.
I do.
Advised, and it may well be, because I've not been able to get to all of my emails, uh, as quickly as I'd like. Uh, he did send me yesterday evening, a copy of the letter of credit, which seems to be okay. I mean, I don't know if the number's okay, because I have to check with John, like, the form and the format, whatever, seems to be, uh, would be fine.
I will resend my response email tonight.
Cool.
To put it, top, put it at the top of the box.
Yeah, it may well, I have about these many emails, there are a line from, um, Smithfield to get to, so, probably in that line.
Thanks, Steph.
I just have one question, you're talking about change your plans, where is the sewerage going for this hundred homes? Heard the plan of O five?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Do you guys see that? It's not coming down through Shawnee Valley over to the Goldsmith Pumping Station?
No, we explored that, none of that in.
So we're doing, it's going down by the dam in the lake.
Has to cross, they get the hollow road, connect the hollow road. To the existing six inch line. Um, just about a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, we have a very feast of the existing entrance to the Sun Mountain Park camp. Where can I?
Is that where, um?
You know where the transport are?
Yeah.
Kind of coming in that line right there, so you're liable to kind of score just this.
So that's where you're gonna bring down some Shawnee Valley Drive down to there to connect to Hollow Road?
Yeah.
You are. Guys hear that?
So you're. Always in the drawings.
Okay.
We're working with.
Um, and then also, speaking of the Goldsmith property, it's been like probably over ninety days since that whole. Mess, I mean, it's not safe, it's an eyesore, isn't the township doing something about that complaint? And then there's properties upon motions not room that are. Falling down, that are disgusting, but what about the Goldsmith, like, so I know there was a formal complaint sent, I had asked, and you said yes.
Yes, and the, uh, BCO investigated and issued notice on that. So that's.
Like ninety days ago, right?
Right, but it's in the building code official's hands.
How, and how long do they have to cure this problem?
I'm not familiar with the process, but I know that they're working.
Then roughly six months or something like.
Six months.
With, with building codes, it's a little different than, than zoning.
From zoning, okay, so it's okay for that place to remain there, like, ready to fall onto hollow road?
Base engineering is aware of it in the word.
Base engineering?
Yeah, that's building code.
That's our building. I know, I'm gonna stay for fifteen more minutes, that's all.
Also has been posted, uh, I don't have, I don't know of anything in that property. Just, but I'm aware of it, and it's part of the overall PRD that's not hard, that is, and it was short. But there are signs.
Eventually, it'll be secured.
The Goldsmith family?
So I'm gonna. Go into your business here, we have consideration to amend the meeting schedule, reverting supervisors' meetings to Wednesdays effective October twenty twenty-five. It'd be the same, uh, second and fourth day of the week, uh. Or Wednesday of, uh, the month.
Care that when it was Wednesdays. You change Tuesdays, I had to change my Vanger zoning line, so now this will conflict with my Vanger zoning line, so if there's a zoning hearing. In Vanger, I will not be able to get on this meeting.
Plan in order.
Okay.
So do I hear that motion?
I'll motion to amend meetings schedule to Wednesdays. Effective in October.
Motion by Mr. Bear. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Loveheim, questions?
I've got a quick clarification, uh, on November and December, you guys have such a third meetings to avoid Christmas and Thanksgiving. Will that also shift?
Should always be Wednesdays, so, but if, if they're not, they're moved because of Thanksgiving?
Yes.
So I think they should move.
Yeah, okay. Oh, so.
We'll have a published, next.
Understood.
Meeting, and then we'll send that out.
So maybe amend the motion to, with the exception of particular meets when there are holidays where. The township preserves the right to change those days.
So, I'm looking at a calendar from Mr. Chair, so the meeting then for October will be October eighth and twenty-twoth. Second, second and fourth Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Correct, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, the zoning map clerical revision, these are just four, uh, uncolored. Or they're technically unzoned. But they're.
That is, that is not the case, they're not unzoned.
I was gonna say, on the, the map.
According to the map, they're uncolored, um, what happened with this is that there's four parcels in front of Mon, uh, Milford Commons. That lost their economic development zone coloring. Um, the map is correct as of an update you did back in May twenty twenty-one, uh, and the error originated after an August twenty-two update. Via ordinance two forty-four, which did not affect these parcels at all.
Right.
Uh, I coordinated with Mother of Kind Planning Commission, and they confirmed that it was a clerical error on their part. And they've sent the township an updated graph that's demonstrating those parts would be correct color. Um, in an abundance of caution, Attorney Karen Saack requested this go forward during the public meeting.
Wow, so.
But do we have to make any, it's. There was no action to undo it, it's never been undone, it was just a clerical error on the map, we have to make any action on it?
I, I think you should vote on it.
Vote on what? On fixing the clerical error?
I think it should, and it should be advertised, and if you go through all that process. Rather than doing it just, you know, looking at the progress, if it wasn't done, it's gotta be done for it.
Well.
And it's a many.
That's your call.
The map, it's not, it's not changing the zone.
No, but you, and if you're amending a map, it requires the same review, you have to advertise, you gotta notify the neighbors, and if the Senate, the planning.
Best case, second November meeting potentially, first December.
And, and I know that's tedious and time consuming, but just the way it should be, especially if someone in those sections say. I don't know what's going on.
Alright. Um, do we need a motion to move it forward?
We can just have, um, the authorization to advertise that at the next meeting.
Okay, so prolong your term.
Okay.
All right. About nine minutes, we have no more quorum, so we'll begin public comments now.
Good evening. Last month, I stood before you to question the financial allocation of Smithfield Township spending. I asked for transparency as it pertained to the total amount of money that the township has spent on the legal proceedings against Mount Manor. Since the inception of the case, and I submitted a right to no request for this very information, to which I received a canned response that additional thirty days was needed to respond. It was also stated that if I chose to interpret this as a denial of my right to no request, that I could file an appeal with the Office of Open Record looking at the business days of its mailing date, um which I have done so. So while I wait for their response along with yours or an update on yours, I would like to know why the board is either unable or unwilling to reveal the amount of taxpayer dollars spent on this issue. This is the public's money and the taxpayers, the very constituents that have voted some of you in office and pay your salaries. Would you, we would like to understand how much of the tax dollars are funding this ridiculousness? Over eight thousand dollars.
Please put your phone down, Will.
I'm looking at the number.
Yeah.
Give me a second. I mean, I can tell you right now, it's about, it was as of the last meeting, it was thirty eight thousand dollars.
That's a little ridiculous.
Spent on.
It's all similar.
I care if it's not.
First speak.
So you're clarifying that the the town has only spent thirty eight thousand dollars?
That's what was sent to me by our finance officer when we asked her as of invoices as through August twenty sixth.
Does that take off the um credits that you were giving us, Will?
The one thousand dollar credit? I don't know. Just looking at a great books report.
Okay, I appreciate the transparency. Thank you. So you've provided us with those numbers, which I thank you because a heck of a lot less than what has been spent on the other side. But I want to ask, since the township has, for whatever reason, decided to pay for this legal case um for those select complainants at the expense of the taxpayers, because.
Do you mind if I answer a little bit?
Sure, I'd be happy.
Because I asked her a sec to share a little bit and I'm, by the way, and it's it's nothing against you. I'm leaving in six minutes. My son literally was like crying this morning because I'm not gonna go see his.
We're all, we're all.
Okay, as let's one.
Okay, I get you. Alright.
Answers.
Guys, let him speak so we can get some answers.
Um no, I just wanna uh Ron, uh, here a sec, explain this. I just want to reiterate, just because I I don't, I think there's some misunderstanding about the process that went about. And anyone that is here for lots of meetings might might know this. Typically, what happens in this township and many other townships, and we actually sort of formalize this in a way, when there is we, when we do enforcement or when the township is enforcing of zoning laws, typically the time that some that the zoning officer will go out to enforce and was when there is a complaint because he's not everywhere all the time. So the result, I'll wait until there's a complaint. And before something gets enforced. That is pretty typical how it happens in most places, and that is formally how it happens here because we have a complaint form. And we do, it is our goal that every complaint form eventually gets reviewed.
Here's a form.
So.
We're doing one at a time.
Let me talk. Okay, so just trying to, trying to help.
Form by Julia.
Right.
Under oath.
I'm not talking about your form. I'm talking about neighbors, a complaint form.
We were told that the township does not.
We're not gonna do this.
Just pointing it out, it's on record. We were told there were no complaint forms. Go right ahead.
Available for us to review.
That they're.
Go right ahead.
There's no record.
Nope.
Okay, sorry.
Doing, not doing crosstalk.
Pardon my interruption.
There are, there are complaint forms regardless of whether there's a complaint. Okay.
There aren't.
I will also say the zoning officer can go and go to a verbal complaint. Doesn't have to be on a form. But our goal is if there is a formal complaint on a form, he will go for sure. That is the goal. Just trying to.
Or he got fired and do a job, right?
Well, so.
Can I, can I, let me just finish, please, please. Because I'm I'm trying to provide. You want some answers? I'm I'm doing so with the lawyer here, so don't say something incorrect. Um, okay, so a complaint was made. The zoning officer, which is by the way, not me, not the other supervisors, went, assessed the situation and deemed that the use that was there was not allowed by right. That was what, that was what the zoning officer determined. The citation was issued. Mount Manor Back Nine appealed the citation before the zoning hearing board. Not this group again. The zoning hearing board determined that the citation was correct, that indeed the use was not allowed in that zone. That was determined by the zoning hearing board. Mount Manor and Back Nine have appealed that decision. Okay? That decision is what is going to Harrisburg. That is what we're waiting on for the appeal of the decision of the zoning hearing board. So when you ask whether.
Supervisors, it's the supervisors doing that and pursuing that, not the zoning hearing.
So the township is the one that puts the bill for any legal proceeding related to zoning hearing board, related to zoning, oh, yes, related to, oh, which there's another lawyer for the zoning hearing board, by the way, it's not him.
Yeah, but he's the one doing it, not the other lawyer.
May I clarify?
So and and just lastly, I, indeed, it is the case that and we were, we were recommended in the interim while you're waiting. There should be, there there should be nothing on that property because that's what we do for all cases in which there is an agreement from the zoning hearing board that something's not allowed. Every time, there's an injunction. It always happens every time. It's not on on this group. It's not because of these kids. I would love to see motor cross facility in our community. I really would. The zoning hearing.
Then dissolve the injunction and allow us to do what we were told we could do by your zoning officer. We were told we would do this.
You have to realize, oh, the judge has our ready to decide.
You filed an injunction after you told us we were within our rights.
I never said.
We're not doing that.
Had an extra take conversation, it was like, and it's obvious.
Keep going. It's not factual, Michael. It's not factual.
I'm gonna let Jennifer finish and then we're entertaining.
So.
During seven fifteen.
Yes, we filed an injunction.
Yes, we are.
The appeal.
Let him know, please.
That's not highly probable.
The hour trip. That I'm just telling you, I mean.
What you were told.
I'm just telling you, the coming here, you're welcome to come here. You're welcome to voice your views. Everything I know, I can't do anything.
There's nothing to be decided.
Stop discussing a little bit.
What's to be decided? Yeah, there are the out track. It's open or we're.
The judge has.
Despite to open our track.
The judge has.
You're not going to until that is, the case is resolved and you also might not be able to.
Go right ahead.
That's it.
No, we're going to.
Can we let her?
Yes.
And then I'm gonna.
Yes, we are.
No, we're not.
Wasn't told that boys can ride, wasn't told the boys can ride under certain.
So here's the thing, it doesn't, if they were.
Were they told they could ride or not under certain circumstances? Yes or no?
We we made.
Yes or no? Simple question.
It's not that simple.
Yes, it is.
We made it offer.
Is it true or not?
We made it.
Were they told they could ride? Yes or no?
Sir, name of your name, please?
Justin Stangle. Yes or no? Were they told they could ride? Not publicly, but can they ride under property?
It was on a legal document. Yes, we made an offer.
That means there's a track allowed here.
No, it's not.
No.
Because it's the same.
They're not allowed to make money with it. That's.
Exactly. They get money though.
We're non-precious.
Oh, but but you.
We grab a nightclub or under resort zone.
So why don't you let them just pay for their stuff and shit and then their taxes go up? They put money into the, I mean, we need every hearing and they do the right thing.
Um, our statement, I'm telling you that, it was already made by the judge. You can yell at me all you want, but.
Hey, you're still appealing. No, if you're appealing, we're.
Entertaining the motion to adjourn.
No, we're not doing this.
I'm allowing you to speak. You have three minutes.
Second.
So I read the zoning hearing transcript and I know that there were fifty complaints according to what was said. However, there's no record of anything in writing. It was verbal. I also know that there's no record of was it fifty complaints or was it thirty people getting the same complaint?
There was your legal test, man.
It, that's not my point. What I'm saying is, I'm well versed on what has been going on here. So I'll cut through the chase of everything since everyone, you know, is putting in their, since what I want to know is according to the joint stipulation stay by Judge So like on July twenty, uh July fifteenth of two thousand twenty five, between Smithfield Township and Mount Manor, there's two points that I would just like to put out there. First, to direct towards Ron with um his explanation, uh at the beginning of the meeting regarding the request for a stay. That was recommended by Back Nine's lawyer for the simple fact that they were hoping that the zoning would come through and that would invalidate the injunction. But there are two points in there. Point four, while the Commonwealth Court considers the appeals during the stay of this lawsuit, the parties intend to redouble their efforts to find a solution to this case. Point five, if the parties are unable to come for a resolution, the parties will promptly notify the court when the Commonwealth Court issues its ruling to discuss lifting the stay and rescheduling pre-type, pre-trial deadlines and trial dates. So my point of what I'm trying to make is while we wait for everything to occur and legal fees incur, um I would love to see the quick books for, I thank you for the verbal. I'd like to see confirmation. But in the meantime, then, if the joint stipulation is staying that there should be an effort between both parties to sit down and go through and try to come to a resolution, why do we need to wait for it to go to a higher court? You don't have to answer that. I'm just putting it out there. There are documents in place that clearly say there should be.
I I've actually stated if 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 you want, if the group wants to in mediation with lawyers present, then I'm all.
Then let's do it.
I've already made that all.
Okay, when's the meeting? Do you offer a date? Will we happen to meet?
No, I was just posted on Facebook about how how much of an idiot I am. That's all.
Okay, well.
Michael, you're the only normal one up there.
I'm just telling you.
Shake your willingness to pull up your. All I'm saying is that he certainly would like to shake off of the law for his economy.
So I'm gonna entertain the motion.
No, we're not done.
Nope, we're done.
So move.
No, we're not.
Motion, Mr. Alber, all second, all in favor?
Keep on going. Keep good.
Public law speech.
You guys work for us by the way.
Respectful, if you ask me.
I stayed.
But like everybody out here is saying. Are adjourned.
Yeah, I will be here for six hours to next meeting. All right.
No, you tell ours.
You don't want to be. All right.
So Jacob, is your presentation a blackish position?
Let me feel like, let me feel like, but not as quick.
We're adjourned.
You mean adjourned? Uh how do you adjourn?